Take that back some more of parliament. Uh, it's now called to order. Abdul Wahab back to lead the prayer. As Abdul Wahab uh do atan.
Yes, yes. What am I asking?
Allahumma la ta'dah an zamban ti hazal maqawam illa ghurqub. Walaa dan illa shafayt. Walaa hajja tan min hawa jina lil hayat. Allahumma innan nasa'alaka min kulli xayyir. Ma'as'alaka min nabiyyaka wa habibuka Muhammadin sara'wukum. Wa nast'aizubika min kulli bishar. Nasa'azuka min nabiyyaka wa habibuka robbimun sara'wukum. Rabbana rialainasobra. As-sabbi akdalamun as-sulma al-tamaqafirin. Shalallahu wasallam ala sidim Muhammad. Wa ala alihi wa ta'ibin. Luhan khribika rabbil azab. As-salamun ala musayyid. Alhamdulillah. We request everybody to stand and sing the national anthem followed by the Bangsa Moro hymn. Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magibil, helas na si gatanan. Alam ng puso sa diti koy buhay. Lupang hiniram, kuya ka ng mahitin. Sa manlulupin, ikapasi sigil. Sanada damt, tutok sa si boyat, sanabi kau bakal. Ayuna damt, la ka'win sa pagkayang ni na malal. Ang isakda, kuwa ka'wan, kurya na dun, ay karanan kini. Ang kituwi na karong ya kayda, ang haydi ba kini din. Luwa na paraw, gangwar, hati pa si ka. Uwe na mit sa piling ko. Ang inikaya na paraw, ay ang amin. Ang pamaytay ng dahil sa'yo. Simula on hanggang ngayon, isa ang naging layon. Magka-isa at magkulong, galitingan ay magugtong. Ngayon tayo mula sa hamon ng nakaraan, diyabo sa paganib na uhaan lang. Inagago sa puso at paliriwala, ang iha'wa para sa kabataan. Bangsa Moro ay tagumpay, ulan pa wis suot buhay. Kabaya pan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papaday Bangsa Moro. Ang sa Moro, Bangsa Moro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami sa'yo'y magpamantay, mananati sa puso tisipa. Ang kaha'ko ng munim, ay nga nagbuwis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay tagumpay, ulan pa wis suot buhay. Kabaya pan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papaday Bangsa Moro. May we request the secretary general to call the roll. Roll call of the honorable members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Abbas Ahmad.
Present.
Harun. Abbas.
Diganitaro.
Alaminan Liza. Alauden.
Ten.
Ali Ibrahim.
Present.
Ali Lanang Junior. Ali Edi. Ambulutu Suharto.
Present.
Amin Adnan Abdalages. Ambatuwan Baintan.
Present.
Anayatin Susana.
Present.
Antao Muhammad Kelly.
Present.
Arnado Marian.
Inanan, mga chillay.
Kawidan. Babau Ali Montaha. Balindong Pangalian. Basman Anna Tarhata. Kandaw Bay Malih.
Present po.
Dilanggalen Hashimi. Lumama Alba Syailaiha.
Ibrahim Ahud.
Esmael Suharto.
Present.
Estino Matarol.
Present.
Gayak Abdullah. Guera Edward. Haji Abdullah Khalid.
Present.
Hashim Abdullah. Hassan Hatimil. Iqbal Mohager. Ismael Rasul. Jajuri Raissa.
Present.
Jakilan Muslimin.
Present.
Jigiri Albakil. Kahalan Dan Martin. Karun Faisal. Lim John Anthony. Luong Benjamin. Luong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose.
Present.
Makakuha Abdal. Makapaar Abdullah.
Ir Hanir.
Makasalong Marjani.
Here present.
Makatanong Amrosi.
Present.
Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantawil Rayling.
Present.
Astura Ishak. Matalam Jafar Apollo Mikael.
Present.
Mualil Amir Bahar.
Present.
Mendoza Freylin.
Present.
Mitimbang Michael. Mitimbang Tawakal. Miss Wari Abdul Karim.
Present po.
Miss Wari Norredha.
Present.
Mitmog Rasul Junior.
Present.
Munius Hussein. Ronon Swabe. Pakasam Ubaida. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Arcasio Randolph. Piyang Ramon Senior.
Present.
Ramos Jamila. Salindab. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Semah Omar Yaser. Semah Romeo.
Present.
Present.
Silungan Aida. Sinulinding Kadil Junior. Sulaiman Ali.
Present.
Tagu Paisalin.
Present.
Present.
Usman Azmar. Uto Basir. Uyoyod City Pahani.
Present.
Yakub Muhammad.
Present.
Bismillah wabihiin astaghfirullahal alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, on the basis of the roll call, there are forty-nine members of the parliament responded to the call. We therefore certify Mr. Speaker the presence of quorum.
With the presence of forty-one, forty-nine members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament as certified by the secretary general, they are, the presiding officer therefore declares the presence of quorum to transact its business for today's special session number one. What's the pressure of the majority of the floor leader?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Mr. Speaker. Um, I move to amend the order of business to include proposed resolution number one eighty and proposed resolution number one eighty-five, which have subject matters that are similar to the ones in the agenda today, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to amend the order of business to include two proposed resolutions as mentioned by the July second, the chair declares this same as approved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, may I move to dispense with the reading of the journal of the previous session, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to dispense the reading and approval of the journal of the session, Journal number eighteen of January twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three session. With this July second, the chair declares the same as approved.
I move to approve the journal number eighteen of January twenty-five, twenty twenty-three session, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move, there is a move to approve of the previous session, Journal number eighteen of January twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three session. Uh, there is July second, the chair declares the same as approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We move to the proposed resolutions in today's order of business, starting with proposed resolutions number one seventy-one, one seventy-two, one seventy-three, one seventy-four, and one one eighty, Mr. Speaker, all about uh the return of the Bangsa Moro Wali Sheikh Khalifa Nando to his creator, Mr. Speaker. Uh, may we request the secretary general to please read the titles and the authors and co-authors.
Uh, may the secretary general is so directed to read the authors, the proposed resolution numbers, the title of the proposed resolution, OPR number one seven one, one seven two, one seven three, one seven four, and one eighty. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-one entitled Resolution Expressing Deeper Condolences and Sympathies to the Brave Family of the Wali of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Farm, Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, and extending profound appreciation and gratitude for his contributions to the Bangsa Moro struggle and to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Author, member of the parliament, Baintan Ambatuwan. Co-authors, members of the parliament, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Amir Bahar Mualil, Liza Alamiya, Suharto Ambulutu, Don Mustafa Luong, Rasul Ismail, Khalid Haji Abdullah, Jafar Apollo Mikael Matalam, Basir Uto, and Tawakal Mitimbang. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-two entitled Resolution Expressing Deeper Condolences and Sympathies to the Brave Family of the late Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, first Wali of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, and extending profound gratitude for his contributions to the Bangsa Moro. Authors, members of the parliament, Jamila Ramos, Michael Mitimbang, Abdullah Hashim, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Ali Montaha Babau, Don Mustafa Luong, Eddie Ali, and Romeo Semah. Co-authors, members of the parliament, Sulaim Baranon, Abdalages Amin Adnan, Sid Sheikh, Susana Anayatin, Abdullah Makapaar, Don Martin Kahalan, Amrosi Makatanong, Ali Sangki, Ali Sulaiman, Abdullah Gayak, Rasul Ismail, Kadil Sinulinding Junior, Ali Salik, Nabila Margarita, Pangandaman Marjani Makasalong, Jafar Apollo Mikael Matalam, Hashimi Dilanggalen, Tawakal Mitimbang, and Abdul Wahab Pak. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-three entitled A Resolution Expressing Sympathy and Condolences to the Brave Family on the Bringers of the late Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, Recognizing and Honoring His Contribution as First Wali of the Bangsa Moro Government. Author, member of the parliament, Susana Anayatin. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-five entitled Resolution Expressing the Profound Belief of the Bad Deep Wray Parliament on the Passing of His Eminence Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, the Wali of the Bangsa Moro. Authors, members of the parliament, Syailaiha Lumama Alba, Anna Tarhata Basman, Raissa Jajuri, Mosbear Alaybin, Marian Arnado, Ubaida Pakasam, Ahud Ibrahim, Abdullah Gayak, Abdullah Hashim, Abdullah Makapaar, Abdullah Makakuha, Abdul Wahab Pak, Aida Silungan, Ahmad Abbas, Ali Sangki, Ali Sulaiman, Amrosi Makatanong, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Bay Ling Mantawil, Basit Abbas, Benjamin Luong, Dan Asnavi, Eddie Ali, Edward Guera, Harun Abbas, Hussein Munius, Ibrahim Ali, Kadil Sinulinding Junior, Lanang Ali Junior, Marjani Makasalong, Matarol Estino, Mohager, Iqbal, Muhammad, Yakub, Mujib Abu, Pangalian Balindong, Ramon Piyang Senior, Sid Salindab, Sid Sheikh, Suharto Ismail, Swabe Ronon, and Tawakal Mitimbang. And proposed resolution one eighty. Proposed resolution number one hundred eighty entitled Resolution Expressing Deeper Sympathy and Condolences to the Brave Family of late uh of Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, Wali of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Author, member of the parliament, Harun Abbas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to consolidate all of these resolutions, Mr. Speaker, as they speak of the same nature, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to consolidate five resolutions. July second, the chair declares the same as approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we invite uh the several authors of the different proposed resolutions to speak, uh, starting with proposed resolution number one hundred and seventy-one. Members to parliament, Ambatuwan, would you wish to speak about your resolution?
Uh, the lady from Magidanao in Cotabato, MP engineer Aida, uh MP engineer uh Baintan Ambatuwan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, in the interest of time, Mr. Speaker, if I may be allowed uh to um forego with my sponsorship speech, uh since uh the proposed resolution speaks of the same uh uh subject, Mr. Speaker, um, and so I would like to request that uh um this will be approved immediately, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Well noted, MP Baintan Ambatuwan.
Uh, next, Mr. Speaker, may we ask if members of the parliament, Jamila Ramos, wishes to speak about her resolution?
Uh, salam alaikum warahmatullahi.
Yes, MP uh Jamila Ramos is recognized. May proceed now.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, yes po, hayaan po ako magpahayag ng aking ownership speech dahil na uh para po sa atin lahat ito ay pagkakataon para ipahatid natin ang ating simpatya sa naulilang pamilya ng ating respektado Wali. Uh, hindi lalo po uh sa kanyang pamilya, hindi ganun po sa uh adito sa atin sa BDA at sa buong Bangsa Moro region. Uh, mapay ako ang pagbati po sa ating mga kasamahan dito sa BDA parliament. Um, sa lahat po, hindi ko na pababanggit 'yan isa-isa, at sa lahat po ng mga kasamahan principal authors and co-authors of the proposed resolution number one seventy-two, nagatayong magpapunta-latin, napakikitalam hati sa pagpanaw ng ating kauna-unahang Wali sa Bangsa Moro. Nasa si Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, at magpahayag ng matinding pasasalamat sa kanyang mga contribution sa Bangsa Moro. Uh, at uh bilang isang kapwa Muslim at hingod bayan, lubos ko po inaalay ang paggalang at pakikitalam hati sa pagpanaw ng ating kauna-unahang Wali ng Bangsa Moro, na si Sheikh Khalifa Usman Nando, nung araw ng linggo, ikalima ng Petreru, two thousand twenty-three. Matatadbaan, si Sheikh Nando ay hinirang bilang Wali ng BDA, alinso Matatadgaan, si Sheikh Nando ay hinirang bilang Wali ng B D A alinsulod sa section one, Article eight, now R eight. Pamamagitan ng B D A Resolution Number One, may ikadalampot siya no'ng Marso, two thousand nineteen. Si Sheikh Nando po ay napagtalooban ng pinakamataas na respeto, kumpyansa, at suporta ng Parlamento upang maging Wali. Bilang Wali, si Sheikh Nando ay kinilala bilang isang ceremonial na pinuno ng pamahalang Bangsa Mora na nagbubutas sa regular na sesyon ng Bangsa Mora Parliament, nagsasagawa ng panunupanang tungkuli ng mga opisyal ng Bangsa Mora at dumadalo sa mga ilang pangpublikong cerimonia o aktibidad. Lingip po sa kalamat ng lahat, bukod sa pagiging ceremonial na pinuno ng ating gobyerno, siya rin ay isa sa mga nagtatag sa Mora Islamic Liberation Front at naging isa sa mga haligi ng mga pakikibasa sa kasaysayan ng Bangsa Mora na dikat- dedikatong nagsilbi sa ating layuning makamit ang right to self-determination sa ibat-ibang kapasidad sa loob ng aning napung taon. Hayaan niyo po akong nabahagi ang ilan sa mga mahalagang kontribisyon ni Sheikh Nando sa Bangsa Mora. No'ng August twenty-four, nineteen fifty-nine, sa edad na seventeen, si Sheikh Nando ay isa sa mga estudyante na nabigyan ng Diplomatic Scholarship Program at takap aral sa Al Azhar University sa Cairo, Egypt, kung saan siya ay nagtapos ng Islamic theology major sa Da'wa. Dito niya nakilala si Sheikh Salamat Hashim at iba pang mga pinuno na tumatag sa M I L F. Si Sheikh Nando ay nagsilbi bilang isang senior member ng M I L F Central Committee at isang permanenteng membro ng Jihad Executive um naging member siya ng Fire Committee ng Eastern Cotabato Region no'ng nineteen seventy-six at M I L F Special Envoy to Afghanistan no'ng nineteen ninety-one. Nagiging chairman din si Sheikh Nando ng Committee on Education of the M I L F Central Committee mula nineteen seventy four Consultative Assembly sa loob ng dalawang Supreme Sharia Court no'ng two thousand at founding member ng Hayatul Ulama of the Philippines mula two thousand eight hanggang dahil sa mga kontribisyon ito, hindi natin magtatanggi ang mga mahalagang papel. Nagiging panahon ang ating yumaong Wali Sheikh Nando sa ating kasaysayan bilang simbolo ng kapayapaan at pagkakaisa sa pagtatag ng isang bak- makabuluhang Bangsa Mora Government. Kaya naman, isasyang malaking kawalan, hindi lalo sa ating gobyerno, kundi pati sa lahat ng mamamayang Bangsa Mora. At inaalay natin ang resolusyon ito at ang iba pang mga naihain resolution sa patilala sa kanyang mga ipinamalas sa pasesikat at kabutihan. Sa loob ng aning napung taon, siya ay nagservisyon na walang halo, pagaling langan ng sarap kayong tayo at ang ating mga abataan. Eh, mapayakang napumuk ngayon sa ating lupang pinubuan. Kaya si Sheikh Nando po ay karapat-dapat na tularan, karapat-dapat pong masundan kanyang ipinamalas na dedikasyon at tauspusong paglipabot ang ating tauspusong pakikiramay sa pamilya ni Sheikh Nando at sa kanyang mga kaibigan, katilala, at mga kasabahan sa trabaho at advokasiya. Nawahi tanggapin ang Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala ang lahat ng kanyang ibada at mabubuting gawain. Nawang livanag, patungo, innalillahi wa inna ilahi rajun, we return. Wabillahi to'fiku.
Mister Speaker?
May proceed now.
May we ask, uh, M P Susana Anayatin, if she would like to s- uh say a short statement about her proposed resolution?
Yes, Mister Speaker, for and in behalf of the settler communities that I represent, we pray for the eternal repose of the souls of the late Wali Sheikh Khalifa Nando, and we extend our heartfelt condolences to his family and entire Bangsa Mora, Mister Chair.
Mister Speaker, I mean.
Thank you, thank you.
Mister Speaker, for proposed resolution number one seventy-four, may we invite uh, Member of the Parliament Mohager Iqbal to speak about the resolution?
Uh, M P Mohager Iqbal is recognized. Yes, uh, M P Mohager, may proceed.
Salam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, uh, Pla Luba, my colleague in the Bangsa Mora Transition Authority Parliament. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Uh, with all my respect to my colleagues in Parliament, uh, I am, I am one of those who really know the late Bangsa Mora Wali Sheikh Khalifa Nando. The first time we met was in nineteen seventy-one, when I was uh in Malina, studying in Malina. We just came from Cairo together with my uncle, start uh Ismail Makakuam, and we, and we worshipped me at my boarding house in Chiapu, Malina. That was the starting point of uh our marriage. And then nineteen seventy-two, uh, when I was nineteen seventy-two, I returned to Mindanao and I promptly joined the M I L F together with Minister of uh Malice. And from that time on, we were together in the other underground movement, first as members of the M I L F and later on in nineteen seventy-seven as members and officials of the Mora Islamic Liberation Front. Lahat man tulad daan po namin, magkasama po kami. And uh, we literally part of each other. Uh, may malaki basa na matagal. The last time that we saw each other was during the Bangsa Mora uh, Autor Nasa Yung Dala Nasa Malala Foundation Day. That was the time uh, uh, when we pagtitutak po namin. At pagkalba, when Sheikh Khalifa Nando first and foremost, she ate ulama, ulama po siya. And then as a ulama, he was who the, who was who the struggle na hindi lang salabas, hindi lang din ang supporters, hindi lang din ang uh ordinary member ng uh, ulama, hindi talaga ang salamag siya. Lahat man tulad daan po namin mahirap, binahan po namin. At ang tagalawa, uh, ano eh, hindi, 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 hindi talaga, ganun ang personality of person, hindi din the character. Ang lakasama po siya, lakasama po siya. Aside from the organization po namin from nineteen seventy-two up to the last moment of his life, lakasama po kami, lahat of travel, the first was in nineteen ninety-eight we worshipped several countries. And when we put our sign, we can only uh at war, we worship, 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 lakasama po kami. We worshipped, I think, even uh around twelve countries, including Valencia, Libya, Abu Dhabi, Qatar, uh Saudi Arabia, Syria, Jordan, uh Libya. Uh, and then the country Iran. So, hindi talaga tututat talaga, uh, real person is dinantao, uh, ano katalagas siya. So, hindi talaga tututat talaga, uh, ulama po siya, at tinututu, 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 uh, uh, tinututu, tinututu, including in, in, sa tawag natin, na reality. He is really a very good person, he is really a very good personality. Uh, despite his fear, uh, art of royalty in the Gondalo and who's another, he is really a very good person. He is really a very good personality. So, without much of a, so, uh, we na kailangan na habang, na habang uh, description of the late Khalifa Nando, uh, dahil na pa kalahin na po ang salita. At uh, uh, I want to, I want to remember the, the uh, discussion about who is Khalifa Nando. And uh, I think uh, it's really very important that we pass this resolution, a reverse object to install. The same with the other salita, uh, lahat of the, lahat po at uh, lahat ng katalagang po the late Sheikh Khalifa Nando, uh, as one of the Bangsa Mora, uh, and uh, the sahina, one of the qualities, so uh, Mister Speaker, uh, Pla Luba, sure I suggest to you to uh, the only one that we have discussed it, uh, because we are the most special, meron na salamat po.
Mister Speaker, for the last uh proposed resolution, it is authored by Member of the Parliament Harun Abbas. May we ask if the honorable Member of the Parliament wishes to speak about his proposed resolution?
M P Harun Abbas? M P Harun Abbas is recognized. May proceed now.
I just want to forego my uh sponsorship speech, knowing pretty well that uh there are similar solutions. So, I just want to consolidate my uh resolution with the other resolutions. But alhamdulillah, we thank Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala that the late Wali of the Bangsa Mora, Sheikh Khalifa Nando had already demise, and we want to pray for our fervent prayers for the eternal repose of his soul in genital firdaus. He has been continuously, as one of the founding fathers of our, of our jihad, vis a vis Allah. He had rendered his services and wavery services for the sake of the Bangsa Mora people uh to attain the right to self-determination of the Bangsa Mora people and to attain internal and sustainable peace, development, and order in the Bangsa Mora homeland. Inna lillahi wa inna ilahi rajun, sukan, masalaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam.
Mister Speaker, I, I move to dispense with uh uh periods of debate and interpellation and as well as amendment, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to dispense with the period of interpellation and debate and the period of amendment, July second day, the chair declares the same as approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to consolidate all of the proposed resolutions and uh approve the same subject to style, Mister Speaker.
Resolution subject style, this July second day, the chair declares the same as approved.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. We move on to proposed resolution number one seventy-five, Mister Speaker, and proposed resolution number one eighty-five. May we request the Secretary General to please read the titles and the authors and co-authors, Mister Speaker.
One seventy-five and one, yes, the Secretary General is so directed. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-five entitled Resolution Expressing the Bangsa Mora Transition Authority's sympathy and solidarity with the people and government of the Republic of Turkey for the devastating death and injury of thousands of people and severe damages damage to the country caused by the catastrophic earthquake that occurred on February sixth twenty twenty-three, Rajag fifteen, fourteen forty-four, history. Authors, Members of the Parliament, Abdurrahaf Makakuam, Mohager Iqbal, Siya Ilaiha Duma Maalba, Suarto Ismail, Anna Tarhatabasman, Raisa Jaduri, Mosber Alaudin, Marjani Makasalong, Marian Armando, Bay Ling Mantawil, Tawakal Midtimbang, Abdawah Ab Pak, Eddie Ali, Abdawah Gayak, Ibrahim Ali, Ahmad Abbas, Matarul Estino, Kadel Sinulindi Junior, Ramon Piyang Senior, and Obaida Pakasam. And the one resolution, one eighty-five. Yung isang resolution na kasama sa amendment. Uh, yeah, one eighty-five. Proposed resolution number one hundred eighty-five entitled A Resolution Expressing and Conveying Deepest Condolences and Sympathy to the Brave Families of the Victims of Turkey, Syria, seven point eight magnitude earthquake that occurred on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Authors, Members of the Parliament, Abdulajis Aminadun. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Attorney Lanang Ali Junior, Jamila Siman Ramos, Faisal Karun, Rangel Parcasio, and Ramon Piyang Senior.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Speaker. May we uh, may I move to treat both resolutions as simple resolutions, Mister Speaker?
There is a move to treat uh two resolutions, simple resolution, this July second day, the chair declares the same as approved.
Mister Speaker, may we invite a Member of the Parliament Suarto Ismail to uh deliver an authorship speech on proposed resolution number one hundred and seventy-five?
Yep, M P Suarto Ismail so recognized.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Um, my courtesy to the Honorable Speaker, floor leader, uh, Honorable Member of the Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Kulun nafsin zaykatul no't, every soul will taste that, Allah akhlak. His praise is often quoted to remind us all of the inevitability of death. Though it may be morbid, keeping this mind that can help us appreciate our purpose in life more. On that fatal day, Monday, February sixth, two thousand three, two thousand twenty-three, a strong earthquake of seven point eight magnitude hit the sou- southern Turkish city of Gaziantep in the early hours of the morning, followed by a series of aftershock. Just nine hours later, a second earthquake stuck just a few cities over in Kahraman Muraz at seven point five magnitude on the richest scale. More than two hundred eighty-five aftershocks have followed. Then ten harder cities in South Turkey have been ordered under state of emergency for three months by Turkish government, including Gaziantep, Kahraman Muraz, Hatay, Adiyaman, Diyarbakar, Adana, Osmaniye, Sanliurfa, Malatia, and Chelis. The two powerful earthquake caused thousands of buildings to collapse, killing more than forty thousand people as of this time, and thousands more are missing. Leaving millions homeless, rescuers were still pulling unlikely survivors from the ruins, one of them just seven months old. Our brothers and sister, the good people of Republic of Turkey and its government have been helping the Bangsa Mora people for years. In turn, we as people in the Bangsa Mora government is finding ways to extend help to Turkey as a gesture of solidarity. We did, we need not to be reminded of a strong brotherhood we have forged with the Turkish government by acknowledging the unwavering assistance extended to us in our struggle for self-determination and in implementation of comprehensive agreement on the Bangsa Mora. Inna lillahi wa inna ilahi rajun. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala grant our brothers and sisters the highest peak of Jannah and forgive their sins. May the Almighty Allah expand their grace and delights it with his blessing. Allah is always merciful towards people who believe in him. To the families of victims, may alma- may Almighty Allah give you fort- fortitude to bear this great loss with all your hearts. Pray to the most gracious, most merciful. Bangsa Mora, sisiin kardisin is her zaman beraberis. Junku, bilikte da'ulajas, Allah kalaikversin, as in a sa'ul sun, get misal sun, tesikulah. Honorable Member of this August body, once again, our deep condolences to our brothers and sisters in Turkey to show us this as one Bangsa Mora in this region. The adoption of the resolution is earnestly questioned. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Wassalam.
Mister Speaker, may we now May we now request, uh, MP Amino Den, who is the main author of proposed resolution one eighty-five. Uh, if he wishes to, to speak, Mister Speaker.
MP Amino Den is so recognized. I think, uh. Bishop. Yeah, that's a present.
Okay, I can, I can see that there is an MP Amino Den in the. Participants, but if he wishes. Mister Speaker, I move to, uh, if, does anybody want to interpolate? Uh, there being no. Um, nobody intending to interpolate, Mister Speaker, I move to consolidate resolutions. Proposed resolutions one seventy-five and one eighty-five, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to consolidate proposed resolution number one seventy-five by proposed resolution number one eighty-five. The chair declares the same as approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to make an omnibus motion to dispense with the periods of interpolation and debate and amendment, Mister Speaker.
There is a omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate.
Again. Mister Speaker, may we, uh. Request that everybody in the, present in the special session today be included as an author, Mister Speaker.
This Secretary General so directed. Members of parliament present for today's special session be author of this proposed resolution.
Finally, Mister Speaker, I move for the approval of both one resolutions. Proposed resolutions number one seventy-five and one eighty-five, Mister Speaker, subject to style.
There is a move to consolidate, there is a move to. Proposed resolution one seventy-five and one eighty-five, subject to style, this truly seconded, the chair declares the same as approved.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Next, our proposed resolution. Numbers one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, Mister Speaker, may we request the Secretary General to please read the titles. Authors and co-authors, if any, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General so directed to read proposed resolution number one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, including. The authors and the co-authors in the title. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-six entitled. Resolution expressing the profound grief of the BTA Parliament on the passing of Philippine Ambassador Ahmad Atla Sakkam. Philippine Ambassador to the Hashimet Kingdom of Jordan and its sympathies. To his bereaved family. Authors, members of parliament of the Rov Makakuam, Muha Gharikbal. Shia Elaiha Dumama Alba, Soharto Esmail, Anna Tarhatabasman, Raisa Jajuri, Mosber Alaudin. Marjani Makasalong, Marian Armando. Bayling Mantawil, Tawak Almitimbang, Abdul Wahab Pak. Eddie Ali, Abdouwagayak, Ibrahim Ali. Ahmad Abbas, Matarol Estino. Kadel Sinulini Junior, Ramon Piyang Senior, and Obaida Pakasim. Proposed resolution number one hundred seventy-seven entitled. Resolution expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolences of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. On the death of former member of the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission. And former ambassador, His Excellency Ahmad Sakkam. And to recognize his contributions in the Bangsa Moro. Authors, members of the parliament, Obaida Pakasim, Soharto Esmail, Marian Armando. Shia Elaiha Dumama Alba, Anna Tarhatabasman, Raisa Jajuri, Marjani Makasalong. Matarol Estino, Estino, Aida Silungan, and Bayling Mantawil.
Mister Speaker, I move to treat resolution, proposed resolutions number one seventy-six and one seventy-seven as simple resolutions, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to treat the proposed resolution one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, simple resolution, and truly seconded, the chair declares the same as approved.
Mister Speaker, I, uh, would like to recognize, uh, please let us recognize MP Muha Gharikbal to. Speak about proposed resolution number one seventy-six, Mister Speaker.
MP Muha Gharikbal is so recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker. Floor Leader. Time I produce on the DTR Parliament, again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. I have a brief statement. But, uh, it's a very important, uh. Statement, it comes from. The bottom of my heart. Uh, for the information of everyone. Although I do not presume to know him. Very much, because he hears from Sulu. And probably I were pleased from. Sulu. Uh, know him more than I know. But, uh. I can also say that I know him quite well. Uh, uh, the late Ambassador Ahmad Sakkam was my classmate in Manila. In the late sixties. I think it was in nineteen sixty-three. Or what? In the bachelor's degree in political science. So, we were classmates. And then when the first Bangsa Moro Transition Commission. In one. Which, uh, I shared. Then the late Ambassador Sakkam. Was a member of, uh. That Bangsa Moro Transition Commission Number One. And as a leader. And, uh, and a former ambassador. He was very. Uh. Very active in the discussion and. And some of the most knowledgeable discussion, uh. Have been contributed by him alongside, uh. Private Minister Man, uh, San Pambang, uh, of both. Uh, uh, other members of, uh, the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission. And, uh, when the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. Uh, was already drafted. We had the final draft of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. After, after under great. First investment. Went to the office of the President. And, uh. The Office of Executive Secretary and the Palace of the Government, because what happened was like this. We drafted the first Bangsa Moro Basic Law, after we drafted it. We presented it, submitted it to the Office of the President. And then for around six months. Uh, many persons, uh, running from the Office of the President, uh. Uh, was, uh, uh, compared to us in the form of, uh. Uh, revised, uh, uh, draft of the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. So sixty percent, eleven sixty percent of the first Bangsa Moro Basic Law. Was revised by the Office of the President. It was presented to us and then, uh, who. We internet, uh, and, uh. Providence or the revision of the Office of the President, because. Uh, we are just a transition of the Office of the President. And I, I, I think that was signed by the President. So it's a higher value. So what we did was that we elevated. We brought Bangsa Moro Basic Law to the Parliament. And the Parliament took it after it, because, uh, for several meetings in Manila, in Manila, in Manila. There has, there have been no, there been attempt. And then for, uh, for that reason, we eliminated. That discussion and the deliberation in the, on the purpose. Like, uh, on the head of the Executive Secretary and on the side of the. Uh, BTO, uh, BTOC. And I, I, I was the counterpart of, uh. Executive Secretary of the Church. So in that discussion. Uh, we managed to settle everything until finally. That we had the first draft. The Bangsa Moro Basic Law, it was finally, it was actually later on, then we submitted the progress. And Ambassador Sakkam. Ambassador Sakkam was. Was very helpful in the first. When arguing. The Bangsa Moro Basic Law in the first progress. That unfortunately, unfortunately, we did not pass. And during that time, Senator Puco Soto was against the Bangsa Moro Basic Law. So, uh, it happened was that, uh. Ambassador Sakkam and Soto were very close friends. Who invited him, uh. A winner and then we discussed about the certain, uh, Bangsa Moro Basic Law. And then Soto promised to ask that he would support. Uh, the next Bangsa Moro Transition, uh, Bangsa Moro Basic Law in the Senate. And, uh, thirty had been promised by, uh, Soto, a Senate President, who supported. That the passage of the, uh, Bangsa Moro Organic Law. And then as a possible to Jordan winner. Uh. He was supporting, he was supporting by, 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 uh, student, uh, in, 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 in. And he was instrumental in helping the students. Uh, in Jordan, because right now we have around three hundred students coming from the now. So he was really very helpful to them. In fact, uh. Three, three students in Jordan were intercepted, uh, in, in fact, uh, one, one of the women. Uh, was a foot behind by, to his left. So in, in short. Uh, as a classmate. As a colleague in the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission, the first one. And as a friend, I think, uh, uh, the resolution that is, uh. Uh, being filed in the DTR Parliament is one of the first, one of the expression. Uh, at, uh, the members of parliament, really to revise his contribution. Uh, to the passing of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, although he was a member of the first Bangsa Moro Transition Commission. And there was not over, present out of the certain Bangsa Moro Transition Commission, so. Uh, this is my, my, my. Uh, 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 the principal essence of this resolution. And I'm fully, I'm fully, I'm pleased. Please in the Bangsa Moro Transition, apparently to support. Uh, this resolution. And I hope and pray that this will be passed to live legally before the Congress, so, so. Ramasalamah.
Thank you, MP, uh, Iqbal. Um. It appears, Mister Speaker, that, uh. The main author of proposed resolution number one seventy-seven, uh, um, is not around. May, uh, we therefore move for the. Uh, consolidation of proposed resolutions, num- numbers one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to consolidate proposed resolution number one seventy-six and one seventy-one, this truly seconded.
Mister Speaker, I move to dispense, uh, with the periods of interpolation and debate as well as the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
Yes, there is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment. It is truly seconded, the chair declares the same as approved.
I move to approve proposed resolution numbers one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to approve proposed resolution number one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, subject to style.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, there being no other resolutions, we move to other matters, Mister Speaker.
Yes, uh, yes. There are two other matters, uh, the, the floor leader may proceed now.
Uh, may we, I request to be able to share my screen for the revised schedule for. The Parliament number twenty-nine, Mister Speaker, or the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code.
Yes, she may proceed now. The Secretary at, this so directed, okay.
Mister Speaker, uh, shown in the screen is. Uh, the, the calendar for February and the portion of March twenty twenty-three, Mister Speaker, in light of. Uh, the developments in, around the, uh, Ba- Bangsa Moro. Parliament BTA Bill number twenty-nine, uh. I would like to present the revised timeline for the bill, Mister Speaker. Uh, sa twenty po, that is Monday, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Uh, the, we are still, uh. Doing the re-languageing on the proposed, uh. Provision submitted by, uh, several members of the parliament, not only from the Committee on Rules. On February twenty-four, which is a Friday, there is a Bangsa Moro Local Governance Code Public Consultation. In Cotabato City and the special geographic areas. Later po, meron ding ipipresent na kalendar ang. Uh, Committee on Local Government. Sa twen- so we foresee. That, uh, there is going to be a Committee on Rules amendments on the Bangsa Moro Electoral Code, starting February twenty-seven. Until March, uh, two, Mister Speaker. And then, uh, there is a Bangsa Moro Local Government, a Local Governance Code, uh. Public consultation in Manila on. March four, Mister Speaker. And we, uh, we know that, uh, we, that Speaker has already issued a. A notice of special session for. Um, Mar- February twenty-seven to two. But, uh, we propose to move it to March six to nine, Mister Speaker, because of. Again, the recent developments in the. Bill number twenty-nine, which, um, includes the need to relanguage. The provisions, Mister Speaker. And we hope that we will be able to enact the, the code by March nine, Mister Speaker. We will request, Mister Speaker. Uh, may we open the floor for questions or discussion, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker.
Yeah, MP.
Boloto.
MP.
Boloto.
MP Boloto, uh, MP Soharto Boloto is so recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, Madam Floor Leader, uh. Uh, uh, let me, uh, raise the matter of the, the, the comment of the Comelect that has already been. Being circulated in our mainstream media as well as in social media. Uh, would you be sharing us a copy, officially sharing us a copy of the. Uh, comment of the, uh, position paper made, or comments and suggestions. Made by the Co- Commission on Elections, that we understand have been transmitted already to the public.
Uh, Mister Speaker, if I may respond. Mister Speaker, the.
You may proceed now.
The Comelect, uh, comments has not been officially transmitted to the Committee on Rules or the Parliament, Mister Speaker. But there is and has, um, there has been a, an engagement by the government of the day through the Cabinet. Uh, Committee on the Electoral Code, Mister Speaker, so, uh, just to, uh. To emphasize that it has not been officially transmitted to the Parliament or even the Committee on Rules. I, myself, I, I'm not sure where, uh. Where the copy, uh. Emanated, yung sinasabi po na umiikot sa social media. But, um, we have, uh, this, we, we have made sure that, uh, the Committee on Rules is aware. That the government of the day has an engagement with a Comelect, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, she may proceed, yes, she may proceed, uh.
If that is the case, uh, so, so as, uh, everybody be clarified. With the, with the clarification of, uh, the floor leader. Uh, there is no way that the committee would be able to consider. The tact and sense of whatever suggestions that may be coming from, say, the Commission on Elections. Unless it be transmit, uh, unless the government today or anybody who for that matter. Has a, has the, has the comments in his possession. So. Ganun po 'yung mahayari, kasi I was hoping sana na, as we go through the process. During the small group conversation, the Committee on Rules. Now, if the comments and suggestions have already been transmitted, then they could have responded or considered that. What considering that it has not been, uh, transmitted to the committee. Or the committee officially being furnished a copy thereof. So, we wouldn't have any way of even considering the position that has been made, uh, available to.
Mister Speaker. Yes, in, in my capacity as a Chair of the Committee on Rules, Mister Speaker, I can, um, get a copy. Official copy of the, uh, Comelect comments. And present it to the, I mean, make it available to all members of the committee or even the members of the parliament, but. Definitely, uh, it will have a, um. Definitely it will have weight in the course of the proceedings in the committee as well as in plenary, Mister Speaker.
So last na lang po, Mister Speaker, uh, so if that is the case, Mister Speaker. I would really, ano, would really, uh, enjoy the Chair, the committee. Instead of waiting for that, uh, document to come our way, now we seek. Uh, we take effort nalang to get a copy and. and officially get a copy and make it available to everybody. Kasi uh right now, uh by next week, uh basically, and dami na pong uh position papers nakaano sa inyo and then we still have that one major document coming. So, raming, raming salamat.
Of course, Mister Speaker, uh the, the Chair will do, the Chair of the Committee on Rules will do that and make sure that it is uh uh made available to everyone.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may I be recognized?
MP Adjeblu La.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
KI Adjeblu La is recognized.
Yes, Mister uh Mamie Pe. If you look on the schedules niyo sa Committee on Rules, mas marami 'yung schedule niyo sa Committee on Rules as compared to the plenary. Di ba mas marami 'yung schedules natin sa plenary kasi mas marami ang magtatanong kaysa sa Committee on Rules?
Uh okay, pagdating sa commit- Mister Speaker, if I uh may respond.
Yes, you may, you may proceed now.
Yes, uh it's, this is actually indicative po uh MP, uh Mister Speaker, this is indicative in the sense that if we have uh, if we make the re-languageing faster and there's a faster Committee on Rules amendments on the back and we have um prepared the, the committee report earlier, uh we will definitely have uh more days for the plenary debates and deliberations, Mister Speaker. Again, this is indicative, but just so that you, as members of the Parliament, get a sense of the calendar and work your schedules around the calendar, if I may, Mister Speaker, uh we are presenting this to you. And we are hoping that, uh well, uh Mister Speaker also, based on the other codes that have been passed by the Parliament previously, there is a uh trend that uh the la- I mean the longest uh plenary debates and enactment of the codes uh take around three days, Mister Speaker. So these are four days that we are um allotting for plenary debates and we hope that by the time that we are uh doing it in plenary or uh discussing it in plenary, ay ma- puli- maganda naman po 'yung committee report, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mamie El, kasi as we consider BEC and uh BGC is are two of the most controversial codes that are, uh we are passing today. Kaya if, uh if all members will be given advanced copy of yun nga 'yung iniingini, sir, ang buluto ng copies. Actually, I asked for this sa chat group natin long time ago na, but until now, we didn't receive any of the comments from the Comelec. Para right now, under, baka kahit sa Committee on Rules, we can pass our comments or before the plenary deliberations para dire-diretso na tayo.
Yes, uh that is noted, um Mister Speaker, uh based on the manifestation and request of MP Angboluto, um pagdating na pagdinting po ng inyong lingkod, ay gagawin po natin 'yan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Yes, is there any MP would like to uh interpolate? Yes. There being none, we proceed to revise schedule for BTA Parliament Bill Number Thirty.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. We will send a copy of this to the uh Secretariat, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, may we request uh the Chair of the Committee on Li- Local Government, MP Raisa Jajuri?
MP Raisa Jajuri is so recognized.
Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. Um actually, I will, I will not be presenting a document uh showing the schedule of the uh Committee on Local Government. But suffice it to say that since we are moving some of the uh scheduled um committee and plenary uh deliberations for the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code, then the schedule for the Bangsa-Moro Local Governance Code uh will also move as well. Um we foresee, Mister Speaker, that uh we may not be able to end up get through up to the third reading um BL, the Bangsa-Moro Local Governance Code before the end of uh March. Uh but this will give us more time, Mister Speaker, to uh scrutinize the provisions. This is a much longer um bill and we may have, we can have more time uh after the first quarter, Mister Speaker. So, but we will proceed with the uh remaining public consultations uh the, that have already been scheduled. So we will have one for uh Cotabato City on February twenty four. Uh this will be held at the Sultan Kudarat um Cultural Center inside the Bangsa-Moro Government Center. And then there will be a simultaneous uh public consultation for the special geographic area uh to be conducted at the Saugarn Christian College in Midsayap uh near the special geographic area. And we propose, Mister Speaker, since uh there will be a um plenary session, uh proposed um special sessions uh by February twenty seven, um which was originally the schedule for another public consultation, this time with experts and other stakeholders who are outside the Bangsa-Moro region. Uh we propose to move this to March four. That will be the third uh and last public consultation for the um Bangsa-Moro Local Governance Code. Uh thereafter, Mister Speaker, from uh March, uh Feb- March six eh onwards, uh there will be committee deliberations uh to be called by the Committee on Local Government. But as I mentioned, Mister Speaker, since we are going on this as I think um on March twenty two, we will not have the time to reach the third reading for uh in the consideration of this bill, Mister Speaker. And we will, we propose to continue uh whatever remains of the steps or the procedure for the consideration of the bill. When we resume, I think in May, uh Mister Speaker. That is all, uh Mister Speaker.
Any questions or clarification from any members of the Parliament?
Uh Mister Speaker. May I just remind everyone of the, ano, the public consultation in Manila, March fourth, no?
Yes. You may proceed now.
Uh yes, Mister Speaker, so I um I would like, just like to tell everybody that uh correct me if I'm wrong, um Chair uh MP Raisa, that this is open to all members of the Committee on Local Government, even, and even to those who are non-members.
Mister Speaker, uh may I respond?
Yes, uh MP Raisa.
Yeah, yes, Mister Speaker, just like in other public consultations, uh first of all, all the members are enjoined to attend. Uh but at the same time, all other members of the Parliament who are not members of the committee are also uh welcome.
Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, MP Am- Angboluto.
Yes, MP Angboluto is so recognized. Uh MP Angboluto, nakamute ka?
Um uh Mister Speaker, we load the services, support that is, are being extended to us by our staff, Secretariat and the Committee Secretariat that has been extending to our committees. However, uh Madam Chair of the Committee on Local Government, perhaps we can advise our Secretariat to send the invitation and the copies po pala. Yun 'yung isang gusto sana ng ibang na- nadaanan na po natin na mas ma- they were really, they were really, gusto nila po 'yung mas engaging po 'yung kanilang activity po. Kung mas earlier po mapadala 'yung mga ka- copies, mga drafts po. Kasi lalong-lalo pa po 'yung mga people in Manila, 'yung mga experts po na they will refer it to their legal departments. And uh it would really be better, ma'am, kung uh mas ma- mas mahaba nila. May pa- meron silang mahabang oras para basahin po 'yung ating uh, 'yung uh pending draft. So if I, if I can suggest, ma'am, that letters of invitations be sent already by, if we can advise the committee to send already the invitations earlier po. And then mas lalo pong earlier po, ma'am, 'yung uh copies, uh draft, yun lang po. Just a suggestion, ma'am, to our committee secretary. Pero, pero recognize mo na medyo, uh maganda namang kailangan pa ni uh assistance sa akin. Thank you.
Mister Speaker.
Yes, uh MP Raisa, you may respond now.
Yes, uh Mister Speaker, I would just like to be clarified, uh we want the Secretariat to provide everyone with copies of the bill?
Hindi, ma'am. Yung, ano, ma'am, 'yung resource persons natin, ma'am.
Ah, okay.
Opo, eh pa kasi, 'yung, may ba 'yung dun sa Comelec, 'yung electoral, ma'am, medyo mahaba 'yung oras nila. Ngayon po, kung, oh, 'yung two weeks, ma'am, if they can have the two weeks kung naproyed na sila at 'yung copy po ng bill po nating. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, there is uh
Clarified. She may proceed now, Mad- Floor Leader.
Uh there is al- also a uh chat in the chat box from uh Deputy Chief Minister Ali Sulaiman. I suggest baka pwede magsend ng invitation letter sa mga MPs siguro ito na pwedeng dumalo sa public consultation sa Manila. Thank you.
Yes. Is there any questions or clarificatory uh questions from the MPs?
Uh it appears that there is none, Mister Speaker. Uh therefore move for the adjournment of this special session, Mister Speaker.
The special session number one is now adjourned.